We're going to call this meeting to order. Good evening. We are calling to order at 6:00 PM. This is a regular session of the East Hampton School Committee. We will have folks joining us remotely tonight, and we'll also have a few presentations. So we're going to start with announcements and correspondence.
And before I do that, can I just add that four presentations tech-wise? The two options are to send me your slides, if you have slides or something you want to put up there, and I can share them via the Google Meet. Or the other option is you can bring our computer up there and you can share, you can join the Google Meet and then share. Those are the two ways that we have worked out that sharing.
And if the presenter is remote?
If the presenter is remote, then they are definitely already in the Google Meet, and they can just share.
Great.
But we don't have to give them permission to share, but yeah.
Laura?
Yes.
You need to announce that you're going into executive session afterwards.
Oh, okay. At the end of this regular session, we are scheduled to move into an executive session in the conference room behind us. We will be adjourning the meeting in that executive session and not returning to regular session. Correspondence?
Correspondence. I do have a couple of things to talk about. We received an email from a member of our community who wanted to let us know and check in about compliance with ADA, ADA compliance in specifically bathrooms at Mountain View. And there has been, since the time of that email, some exchange back and forth and some additional understanding, and maybe during other, we can get an update on where we are with that. But we received an email about that. We also received an email from a parent who is a member of the school committee, who wrote with concerns about the way that the--
The school council?
School council.
Yep, school council. Not a parent, it's on school committee, this is school committee. Okay. A parent who's on school council at Mountain View, and who wrote with concerns about the process of how the school council was running and how the school improvement plan goals were being developed. And that was also, at this point, about two and a half weeks ago. And as I understand, there have been additional conversations that are not part of correspondence. And then finally, we received what I would call a very fun email from Brian, who is, I want to see if I can find what his position is, because I'm just going to say he works in fish and game.
Fish and wildlife.
Fish and wildlife?
Yeah, engineer for fish.
Fish and wildlife engineer. And so we received a proposal from him that he would take the lead on and write a grant for us to grow, he's probably watching and feeling very ashamed of how I'm saying this, grow eels. We would get to grow our own eels in--
Classrooms.
Classrooms, terrariums in classrooms. And it's a grant, so it would not cost the school money. It would be connected through U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. He would write the grant with our support if the school committee is okay with it. And then classrooms at Mountain View would get to grow American eels. And if we end up doing this, if the school committee isn't support, the application is due on March 1st, so he needs quick okay from us that he can write and submit. And then he could come and give a presentation. And he wrote us an email with the top 10, no, the top six attributes that make American eels a cool creature. And I really want that presentation to happen, because I wrote back and I told him that I laughed, I cried, I felt things, I didn't know I liked eels, now I like eels. Anyway, that's the last piece of correspondence, and we can discuss during other if we want to support it.
One more too. I apologize, I'm terrible with names, but we were also approached to participate in the Read Across America event, and I signed up to do it, so.
Yes, that's true.
Correspondence?
It is.
So that's an event where some of us will be reading books at Mountain View to kids.
Yes.
And my son has requested I not do it in his classroom, so.
Well, thanks. I will be in his class, so.
You're going to be in his classroom.
I'll let you know how it goes.
That's all I have of correspondence, and I also do not have any gifts to report.
Okay. Student representative updates. Mackenzie maybe is online.
I do not see--
This meeting, just to remind the public, was rescheduled from last week, so some of our folks, especially our kids, were on vacation this week. We are not going to make them feel bad for maybe not being here this evening. So we look forward to seeing Mackenzie and Piper at our next meeting and hearing all about what's going on in Mountain View and at the high school. So with that, we're going to open public comment. We've been asked that if you're interested in speaking, you can come to the podium if you're here in person, or raise your hand if you're online, and we'll call on you one at a time. We'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and remember that we can't reply to you in the confines of public speak, but we are listening to what you have to share. Is there anybody who'd be interested in sharing this evening? Anybody online?
Chair, would you like to recognize Leah Ewing?
I can't read that. Leah, yes.
Leah Ewing, yes.
Yes.
Am I able, are you able to unmute? Oh, good.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Leah.
Hi, my name is Leah Ewing, and I have one child at Mountain View Elementary and one at Mountain View Middle School. Well, there are many things I love about our schools. My teachers, my child's teachers have been kind and hardworking. My kids feel welcome, and our new building is beautiful. I'm currently disappointed in the way the Mountain View School Council is facilitated and in the way our school improvement plan reports on academic goals. These concerns were brought into clear focus after I watched the head principal and superintendent present this plan at the last school committee meeting. As you know, school council is required by Mass. state law and is intended to provide an opportunity for collaboration between school admin, teachers, and parents. Importantly, the school council is tasked with developing a data-driven school improvement plan, a plan with clear and measurable objectives. This year, the school council was scheduled to meet only four times total for a recently consolidated school managing a middle school and an elementary school. While parents and teachers did have some time to reflect on a parent-teacher survey, part of the communication goals, our collaborative work on the other three sections felt very rushed to me and may not have been solicited at all had parents not asked about these sections before we needed to move the SIP onto the school committee for approval. If I had known how the same administration would verbally answer questions related to benchmarks and academic achievement gaps, I myself would not have approved this document. As a whole, the document lacks specific reference data and benchmarks. School council members were never in fact presented with fall baseline data or targets based on last year's successes or failures. It is also unclear to me what curricular assessments other than MCAS are being used in grade seven and eight, and if teachers outside of the math and English departments are expected to measure student progress in any way with respect to the school improvement plan. This concerns me as a parent, because our middle school does not currently offer basic access to the Mass. digital literacy and computer science standards. We also haven't mapped out or developed multimodal benchmarks to monitor progress in the Mass. Science, Tech, and Engineering standards, even though these have been around since the year 2016. Furthermore, we are also the only middle school in the area that doesn't offer foreign language. Essentially, our children's middle school options are the same as their elementary options, and everyone rotates one day per week through specials, just as they did in elementary, other than the goals outlined in our plan. How does our school get these gaps in course offerings, or to address how we are monitoring our progress in these missing areas? This was the work I wanted to do in middle school, because I feel very concerned about sending my kid to this middle school that doesn't offer true electives or options that are up to date. I say this separate from the fact that I do really respect the teachers and think they're working their hardest, and the employees. I hope that going forward, the superintendent and school committee can find incremental ways to help improve the way school council is facilitated, to be more inclusive of the middle school, and just more collaborative on all of the goals, less rush, and to the integrity of the data and the benchmarks used on the SIP. What specifically are they? What do they measure, and how are they measuring growth from baseline data? Thank you for listening. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Leah. Is there anybody else who's interested in speaking? I'm going to give it one more minute. Oh, yeah, sir, of course, yes.
I don't know if I fall in line with the agenda here, but I'm with the, my name is Jim Hickson, I'm with the Veterans Council.
Hi. Oh, we actually, we have you on the agenda this evening for the presentation of the plaque.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is coming up in just a couple of minutes. That will be giving you the floor, we have you on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much. If there's any other public comment, or we're going to close that for tonight and move on with the agenda. Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's update. Superintendent Banana?
Yes. I'd like to speak tonight on both the school improvement plans, but also to address the message that we did get from a parent regarding the bathrooms at Mountain View. So we did get documentation that the bathrooms are American Disabilities Act compliant. Nothing can be built through MSBA unless they do fit the compliance. So for that particular student, what we're going to be doing is to provide accommodation with school personnel. So the issue is pushing the doors have to have like a weight at the top of it that prevents it from snapping back and hitting a student when they go in. So, you know, my first thought was, well, could we take that off of there? And we can't. Those have to stay there. So it does meet the law, and there was a question also asking us to check at East Hampton High School. They are also American Disability Acts compliant. So we're not going to be able to change anything at this particular time. However, we will make sure that student receives accommodation to be able to get in and out of the bathroom safely. As far as the plans go, the world language teacher, I believe at one point there was world language, but due to budget, that personnel was no longer able to be provided at the middle school. It is a really good point, and a future point, and a future plan, to actually provide world language and world language culture at the middle school. That's something that's going to involve financial support for all that to happen. In the meantime, you know, everybody does agree on that fact. So the head teacher at Mountain View was meeting with the private school here with the science, I mean, the Spanish teacher, and we're setting up a program where the students taking high-level Spanish from Wilkinson will actually be coming to the middle school and actually working with some students so they can begin to learn Spanish and Spanish culture. So that's in the infancy stage.
What grades are they talking about?
Middle school, just the middle school grades.
Six, seven, and eight.
Probably seven, eight, right? Because that's most likely where you would teach it. So that meeting occurred last Friday, so I think that's a really great idea, is, you know, we can't provide the direct instruction by teacher, but we can actually do this. So I think that's, we're moving in the right direction. As far as talking about the tech goals, those goals can be integrated into regular classrooms. So also, there was, I think Leah spoke about the library period, and another parent also spoke about that, and really wanting to have something done. They felt more constructive during that period. So thanks to Julian Levin, we've been discussing putting coding in there for students during that period, and so we're in the process of working to have that done for seventh and eighth grade. So we are moving forward on that. Now, as far as the school council, the majority of the members of the school council did vote for that plan. It was based on school data. The principals and the teachers have seen the school data. I think our plan in the future is to be able to show the school data at more of an expansive level to some of the school council members that are interested in doing that. We did offer Julian Levin and myself, and also the head of school, to sit down with any parent that would like to look at some of the data and what the goals were based on. And so we are still available for anyone here that's listening for a couple hours to sit down and show you the data and answer any personal questions you have about your child and the connection to the goals. So today, we're asking that that school improvement plan for Mountain View be approved. And then as far as the high school, they did have a vote of their school council. The reason we didn't have one before is that a snow event prevented that meeting, and that vote was to approve the plan for East Hampton High School. So those are the two areas that we're asking for a vote on tonight.
Just in the interest of time and knowing that we have this member of the public, before we get into the discussions about the school improvement plans, and we have two presentations that are coming after that, I wonder if we could maybe skip ahead briefly to the presentation, if you wouldn't mind, sir? We can do that now, so you don't have to--
Get into the weeds of this.
We're going down to, we have a presentation tonight regarding the return of some plaques. If you'd like to go ahead and tell us a little bit about that and reintroduce yourself to the public.
My name is Jim Hickson, I'm a member of the Veterans Council here in town. And we've come into a situation where, actually, there is a situation where the American Legion, excuse me, presently has three plaques that we believe came out of Pepin School. We're not, that's, part of the problem is we don't know exactly where they came from and how they even got at the American Legion. But right now, there are three plaques. One of them is a bronze plaque that's probably about four feet wide and about three feet high. And the other two are wooden plaques. And the bronze plaque is dedicated to the students that quit high school during the First World War and went in and joined the service to go ahead and serve during that period of time. And the plaque from what's on the plaque itself, it was dedicated by the High School Alumni Association in 1922. The other two plaques are wooden, and we don't know where they came from, I mean, when they came to be. But like I said, there are three plaques there now, and the American Legion doesn't have any place for them. And unfortunately, the Veterans Council, we don't have a place either. The mayor probably knows this. We just went through, and we're limited on finances, and we just spent a good deal of money having the monument repaired at the library. And so we're limited on funding. But seeing that, it appears that these came out of the school department, this is why I'm here, to present the case to you. I don't know what you'd like to do with them, or what the city would like to do with them, but I don't think that really that they belong at the American Legion. I think they should be displayed where people can see them, view them, and give the respect and dedication to these people that served. So this is why I'm here. I have some pictures here, and I apologize for my poor photography, but it'll give you an idea. And like I said, the bronze plaque is pretty heavy. It goes probably about 400, 450 pounds. And if the city does go ahead and decide to take them back in Mountain someplace, we do know of somebody that will go ahead and do them, and they do a pretty good job. They're highly recommended. But I leave that up to you. And my reason for being here is just to present you with the case that we have the plaques, and they came out of the high school, and I don't know, we don't know what to do with them, and it was suggested that I come and present the case to you. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you so much for coming. I will definitely grab those pictures from you. So what we can do as we're addressing this agenda, we can have a discussion, and a member might even want to move tonight, but thank you so much, we appreciate.
Yeah, like I said, I figure that, you know, these people here, you know, at high school, they should get the record.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for your stewardship, Jim, I appreciate it. I'm going to pass this down. Any, we can open this for discussion, if anybody has any comments?
I'm just immediately wondering, can they go into the high school?
Well, that I don't know exactly, but I do know that we could certainly, we could vote to take ownership of them, to, you know, be responsible for them and determine, once we talk to custodial services and whatnot.
Very cool, they should be displayed.
It seems like a really powerful memorial to what it's like to be a high school student, you know, in time, and be an interesting thing for students to be able to see that.
That's amazing. I think, well, I will make a motion of cases discussion, but I would move to accept them.
I'm geeking out a little bit. Mayor, do you have any thoughts?
Um, yeah, and not, I agree. I mean, I think that the school, you know, whatever the procedure is, the department accepts them back. When we have looked for other places to put up such plaques, they're really heavy. It's really, you know, and I would say to, the work that the city did with the Veterans Council is well worth it, and it was probably the only, like, in our lifetime. But it's expensive, and we actually have a couple of other plaques from the city that we have possession of, and we thought we could put them up on the brick wall. We were going to do like a plaque mural. And to hang them, it was almost $10,000, because the wall wasn't, like, where the monuments are at the library, they were built for the plaques, and most brick walls aren't. So I would just, I completely would vote and endorse the school taking ownership of them again, but I would also, Mr. Hickson is correct, it's not cheap to keep them up, it will be a one-and-done, and hanging them, we have found from other plaques, very, very difficult. I mean, you, yeah.
If we take ownership of them, where would our storage options be for them until we could make a decision about display?
We do have storage facilities at both school campuses, and isn't it immediate concern for them to be relocated? Are they in a safe place currently?
I don't, I don't think it would be with the American Legion. I mean, they're all veterans, and they understand the situation. And if, I think the commander of the Legion, if he hears that the plaques are going to go back to the school department and be mounted somewhere, I think that would be sufficient for him. It's just that we, like I said, right now, they're leaning up against the wall at the American Legion, because the Legion doesn't have the facilities, nor do they have the finances to go ahead and mount them. Like the mayor said, if it hadn't been for the mayor and finding funding for the repair of the monuments, we probably wouldn't have had it done. It's expensive. And, but again, I think being, it's, actually, it's a history lesson, too.
Yeah.
These people served, and you know, it was at that time. The other two plaques, the wooden plaques--
Sir, will you come up so that everyone at home can hear you? I'm sorry, just want anyone to miss any of that. Yes, thank you.
I ramble, and I apologize.
No, no, please.
We just want to be able to hear you.
And the other two plaques are wooden. Those wouldn't be too bad of a problem to mount. But before you mount them, you might want to take a look at them, because a lot of, if you look at some of the pictures, a lot of the lettering has coming off over, you know, it's deteriorated and everything. The bronze plaque, that's going to be a project, because, like I said, it weighs 450 pounds. And we had to go ahead and repair the monument at the library, because the people that put the plaques on originally didn't do the job right. So if you want to go ahead and do it, you want to make sure that it's done, and that's it. You don't have to worry about it later on, so it is somewhat costly.
And it looks like, are some of the names missing off of the high school students that went, or are they just not on the plaque?
I don't, I couldn't tell. The bronze plaque is raised, and if you look at the wooden plaques, those are all just nameplates. It looks like there's one or two missing on one of those plaques, but on a bronze plaque, I'm not, plaque, I'm not sure.
We just have to figure out, we didn't miss anybody? I mean, if someone, we'd have to research.
I don't think on a bronze plaque, that's the case, because of the fact that it's raised letters.
Okay.
So it sounds like tonight, we could limit a decision to taking ownership, and then it'll be a longer-term mini-project. Maybe we'll work in tandem with custodial services, and also maybe some of the high school history students in the history department, see who's interested in working. And maybe we also might be able to get some community support to make any restorations needed, or retrofitting, or--
Well, like I said, the Veterans Council is somewhat limited, but if we can be assistance, we're definitely there. That's why I'm here.
So appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion where I'd entertain a motion to accept ownership of the plaques?
Only other discussion that I have, I think it's a great idea to kind of involve the broader community in this, and if anybody's listening to this and getting like super excited about it, please let us know. One thought that I had that would be cool is for those students, I wasn't aware of how many students left high school to go fight in World War I, and it might be nice when we kind of figure out what we're going to do with it, if we can do some kind of, you know, graduation kind of ceremony for them.
Oh, my God.
Reach out to their families if they're in the area.
Sure, Bams. Wouldn't that be cool?
Yeah, we're just talking to maybe a high school history teacher who, or literacy teachers, because they teach perspective and understanding points of view.
I just think it would be, it would be good to kind of write that.
It's an excellent learning.
Excellent learning opportunity for all of us. I mean, I feel like right now, I've just learned so much, and I think for a history teacher, for a high school to take this on, so I would move that we take ownership and then move from there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that, can I, is that a motion, Linda?
That's a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Motion to accept ownership of the three plaques from the American Legion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you so much. And we'll, can I just ask to get your contact information so I could follow up with you?
And maybe we can post some photos in the minutes?
Yeah, I think we can.
You're out of the way to show some photos of them, once we get ownership.
Okay, shall we bounce back to under superintendent report?
From one of the superintendent things? Yeah, okay. Let me find that piece of paper. So thank you for those updates on sort of ongoing things that we've been discussing for the past couple of weeks. And I want to circle back to the first update you gave about the ADA accommodations and ADA compliance. So we are completely, there is a, just for my own making sure I understand this, there is like a process that goes into checking for ADA compliance. We are completely ADA compliant.
Yes.
The concern, though, is that even with meeting ADA compliance issues, sometimes there are still things that are challenging, given a particular situation, and this is one of those instances. And so it sounds like we have a plan for this particular student. I just wondered if there's a way, do we have some sort of like auto alert that this will, like, if another student who comes back around with a similar issue, will they have to raise it again, or will it just get flagged? You know what I mean? So that families don't have to--
Right. So through the chair, the principals all know about it, and so, and they can certainly share it with the staff, too. It just happens to be that, you know, that door is very heavy, and for this particular student, it's too heavy. So, you know, they're very good there at Mountain View. They're always looking to see if there's anything that they can be helpful with, with students, so it is not going to be a big issue, that they will take care of it as different children with different needs arrive.
So it'll just be like one of the things they cross off on their list of--
Yes.
Here's situations that might need to address? Is it something that you, okay, got it. Thank you. That helps.
So next up was the Mountain View School Improvement Plan for 2023, 2024. And that's just for a vote. Any discussion about that Mountain View?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
I believe, were there a few things that we had said were going to get changed?
One thing--
Can we get rid of the--
One thing in particular from, that the mayor had suggested about who was listed as support staff, I believe, for social emotional learning, something to that effect.
So is this the one that's in our pocket? This is the update? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there other changes that you're aware of, or is that--
That was the only revision that we had requested be made, aside from the ongoing correspondence that we've received with concerns from various parents. Any comments, discussions, or motion to approve?
I mean, I was curious, Leah mentioned that, or, no, sorry, Maureen, you mentioned that the, it was built on data, and I'm just curious to hear a little more about the data.
Sure.
It seemed like she was pretty sure that it had been lacking in that, so I'm just curious.
So, you know, the principal works with the teachers and the district office on looking at the data. So the principal and the teachers are well aware what that data was, also the MCAS data that we presented here for each of the schools. It was based on that also. I think the questions were mostly about the middle school data, and so there's no standardized testing that we use there. There's benchmarks, there's a curriculum that very clearly has benchmarks, and they clearly has benchmarks, and they're using that data as far as middle school progress goes. And they can also, you know, when it was Parents Night, open house, Parents Night, they can also ask at any time for the teacher to see the data for their children.
Okay. It sounds like, other than MCAS, it's like in-house discussion.
There's benchmarks based on the curriculum, and that's what we're using for the middle school at this point.
I thought they had mentioned iXL as well as being a data point.
There is iXL, too. There is iXL also. And there is.
I Ready? The other one, isn't I Ready another one?
STAR. They do STAR at the elementary school.
But, yeah, but we're talking about what they were using is data for the. Oh, okay.
Yeah, they use STAR for elementary. And, and then they use benchmarks for curriculum that is approved from the state to use for the middle school. So they use the benchmarks for that.
I have a question about the timing of when. It seems odd to me that we get this in January and February, more than partway through the year. Can you speak to why that's done that way? And if there's, what sort of flexibility we have to try to produce and approve this earlier in the school year?
Sure. Usually it is done earlier. So last year, there wasn't one done. So this year, when we came in, we developed jointly what the plan was gonna look like. And the schools then took that plan and met with their school councils. And in the case of Mountain View, they wanted to have an additional meeting in December. So with the additional meeting in December, it, you know, just extended the time for that. So meanwhile, the work is still going on, right? This is just the school improvement plan that you have to have, that everybody in the school has to know about it. As far as the school goes, the goals go by the superintendent's goals, and then they also go by your strategic plan. And that's how it's built. And then the school council is brought in to see what parents think, what is it that they would like to see added to this plan.
Do you think it's a possibility that we could set a goal for next year of having this approved and brought to the school committee by October instead of?
Probably by November 1st, maybe.
November 1st?
Yes.
Well, it's an improvement from where we are.
Yes.
Um, any other comments?
I just wanted to clarify that it sounds like, like this, the way that this one was developed, there's some growing pains on all sides of it. And already, by the nature of the fact that we have one, next year will go more smoothly, but we can take the time over the summer and in the first meeting to make sure. Okay. So I just, I wanna make sure that the parents who are talking to us about how school council and the SIP was created and all that kind of stuff feel like they're getting heard and their, their voices. But it sounds like it's just a new school, combined, different timeline, growing pains. This stuff is already underway. So this is really about just, for what's been happening all year, eventually, anyway.
So the formalized process starts the first day of school. However, the written document follows the process. And there has to be time for parents to be able to meet on it, too. And usually, you know, they, they don't necessarily always meet in September, but certainly, there's no reason why we can't have them also meeting. We don't get all the MCAS stuff back early enough sometimes. So sometimes we're stuck on getting that data points back. Also, you don't start, you do a STAR assessment for elementary, usually around October, somewhere around there. And so that's your first assessment that you're looking at, and then you don't have a comparison till you do it in December. So sometimes it's the assessment schedule also. But you don't always have to have that in. When you get your STAR's data, you know where your kid, the kids are in front of you. You're already working to improve the gaps.
That makes sense. Um, I, I've personally been reached out to by several of these parents. I, I think I can see a little bit of both sides of the argument. I would, I do feel, let me sort this. I don't think approving or not the school improvement plan makes much of a difference. So I think we'll, we'll likely go ahead with that tonight. I would like to take some further action tonight, just to try to make some further headway with these parents, especially, you know, partly in how these school improvement plans are designed and implemented, partly in the, the data that they're using to assess goal setting, and also partly to talk about this school council piece. I think we're a little confined in the setting of a regular session, but it occurred to me that perhaps we could schedule a work session, which would allow any, that's a public meeting, we could advertise it particularly to the parents who had voiced concerns about that, and have the topics of discussion that night to be school improvement plans and school council, just to start to information gather, hear from these parents directly in a setting where there can be a bit more of a back-and-forth conversation. We are, our school committee's schedule is a little tight, a little tight. It's extraordinarily tight right now, but I think we could reach out to members this week to try to find a date as early as April. And then as soon as we have that date set, we could make an announcement about that work session being set. And it's also possible we could do a, a hybrid option for that, although we would have to figure out if we could find a room that could accommodate that.
We could do it.
Does anybody have any feeling on that, or we can move to?
No, I like that. I like that idea. I, I feel similarly that kind of, we need to, approving the plan tonight is really important in terms of the, the way the rest of the year flows, and in terms of the way that we're accountable to those plans. So I think that would be good. But I'd be happy to kind of look. I, I do think this fit, this also, it fits into like a, a broader thing that I've been thinking about personally, in just our changing expectations for schools and for the ways that schools interact with community and are a part of the community. I think that since COVID in particular, not just in our district, in every district, there has been a change in the way that families feel and that they are connected to their district. And so I'd like to kind of think about this in terms of that as well. So I think this is a nice opening for those conversations.
Anybody else have a comment? Or we'd entertain a motion for the MVS School Improvement Plan?
I mean, I'm, I'm excited by what you're describing. I wanna do that. And I, I definitely feel like we need to fortify the way this is designed, more transparently, and again, slow this down and really kind of think about what we're building in that document. And yeah, like, the sooner we can get on that, the better.
Yeah, it seems like we wanna, yeah, making a, a work session to work on how we can improve the improvement plan. But I think also, having families understand that this seems more like an in-house, this is for the staff, I think, talking about it the last meeting, when there is STAR testing or core front testing in math, the data is there, but it's just used in-house. So the plan is structured for staff in the building. So maybe discussing how, I mean, it was discussed that parents could request information at, at conferences and, and those types of settings and meetings with teachers, maybe figuring out a way to put dialogue about how families can be made more aware of how they can request that information, when they can see, you can see in real time where your kid is at grade level, and just giving them that information to know, we have that data, the teachers are using it. And if you'd like to see it, we'd love to share it with you, something like that.
Anyone else? Still looking for that motion to accept?
Do we do them each, one at a time then?
One at a time.
So motion to accept the MVS School Improvement Plan for 2023 to 2024?
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in, any discussion, first of all? Further discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And a motion to accept the East Hampton High School, did I?
Hold on, one second.
That was a delayed aye.
That was an aye.
That was, sorry, that was a I oppose.
You oppose?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a nay.
Nay, sorry, sorry, thank you.
Sorry.
It's so rare, it's so rare that I do that.
Abstentions? Okay, motion passes?
All right, you want another one?
Yes, please.
Um, a motion to approve the East Hampton High School Improvement Plan for 2023 to 2024.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Eric? Any discussion about the EHS School Improvement Plan? Would you like to say anything, this officer? Yeah. Want to come to the podium?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sue Wilson. I'm the Assistant Principal at East Hampton High. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. Principal Evans had a prior commitment based on the change in the schedule of the meeting. So he apologizes for not being able to be here, but I'm pitch-heading for him. I'd like to talk about the school improvement plan that you saw in January and were able to review. There's been two changes to it that are highlighted, that were sent to you. Both of these changes were suggested by our student representative on the school council, and we're very happy to bring those to you also. Additionally, our school council unanimously approved the school improvement plan. But I'd like to address the first improvement, which is on core practice number one. The school will partner with the Hampshire Educational Collaborative to provide after-school homework and tutorial support by a licensed math teacher that is open to all students. We're very excited that we're collaborating with HECC, or, I mean CES, to provide an English teacher on Tuesdays, a math teacher on Wednesdays, and a social studies teacher on Thursdays, at a bare minimum, along with NHS peer tutors for those three days. In particular, tutors that will have proficiency in math. So that's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, there'll be tutoring and peer support after school at EHS, which works nicely with the late bus that we have this year, which is a great addition, which is on Wednesdays and Thursdays. So we're very, very appreciative to that work that was done, the efforts that was done there. So that's on core practice number one. And on core practice number two, we're also having extended absences that students have provided time and support to make up missing work in smaller manageable chunks. This is where we work with students that have been out for a little bit. The counselors, our school counselors, and our teachers communicate, we, the administration also communicates with them, to be able to provide a pathway, if you will, for students to catch up on work. Bless you. In manageable chunks. So they might be only looking at one class per day, staying after with teacher, or coming before school with the teacher, to be able to not fall behind. So it's tough when you've been out for a little bit, and then you come in and you're doing new work, along with some of the older work. Our teachers are just amazing in being able to support our students that have been out. And we really appreciate that collaboration. There's a few different ways that we do that. But in the end, I think what you see is that students are, are not falling behind and feel like they're supported by everyone at the school. That's our hope and our intention. Any questions on any of the additions to the school improvement plan?
Questions? Really thoughtful revisions. I appreciate that kind of proactivity with that, students, too.
We will definitely bring that back to the school council, and in particular, to the student that provided those additions. Thank you. And I'll come up for the program of studies.
Yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do that next. We're gonna skip ahead of the next. So we do have that motion on the floor to approve the East Hampton High School Improvement Plan for the 2023, 2024 school year. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a multi-tiered system of support presentation. But just in the interest of respect for Ms. Wilson's time, we're gonna skip ahead really quickly to the EHS Program of Studies.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. As you know, our program of studies, which was provided to you, is a pathway for our students and caregivers. It provides an explanation of our courses, explanation of our core values, and, and a pathway to graduation and college and career readiness. There are a couple of additions that I'd like to also provide for you, that you were, three different additions. One is about the new language for accumulative grade point average, that I think you were provided?
Yes.
Okay, all right. It clarifies the, the GPA, which is calculated and states clearly the policy that we do not report class rank. It's not a new policy. It just simply states it more directly in the program of studies. We provide the GPA for all students, and that's on their transcripts, but we do not have the class rank reported, except for the valedictorian and salutatorium, because those are cash awards that are given to both of those. Many schools do not ever require class rank to be provided. Scholarships, the same thing. If there's a request for a class rank on a scholarship, we just, we just have our students indicate that we're not a, a school that reports class rank. They do get their GPAs. Not there, the class rank is not, not there. It's just, this is just kind of fine-tuning in our program of studies that it's delineated that way. It's been a, a practice that we've been doing for a while. Great. Secondly, let's you know about the dual enrollment grades. Those dual enrollment grades are, the student, based on FERPA policies, the student provides that grade to the school counselor. The school counselor cannot, or guidance counselor, what we would have maybe grown up with as guidance counselors, they're called school counselors now, cannot communicate with the colleges that are dual enrollment. Students are going to, to get their, their grades. So the student provides that to the school counselor. Great. And then third is the digital illustration and animation is going from a two-credit course, which is a every other day, an AB schedule class, to every day, or a full semester four-credit course, to allow for students to really have time for the full curriculum of both of those classes. Right now, they've been, like, every other day, so they're only getting part of the curriculum. We're very excited that so many students have signed up and registered this year for those classes. Our, our teacher, Mike O'Connor, is a great teacher. He's a new addition to EHS. It's gone very, very well. And we're offering two classes moving forward for this next year, which really makes a lot of sense. And it's, you know, computer, graphics, animation, and I think, maybe, maybe not most importantly, but right now, most importantly, I think, is that students love these classes. They're so into them. And that's, that level of learning, when you love something and you learn about it, it only reaps benefits. So we're really happy about this change.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about those proposed changes?
I, I think it's more of a comment around the class ranking. With cash on the line, I just, my personal experience with having a very competitive child, that it just doesn't go away. And I'm, I'm not suggesting, I, I just am, if there's no class rank, I think there should be no class rank, regardless of scholarship and that the scholarship or the cash should be worked with whoever donates the money, around what that takes place or time. I mean, I, I can see a student wanting to do the animation class, and maybe that's not as weighted as much as an AP class or a class somewhere else. And, and without everyone knowing that they can be ranked and really understanding that, I think it just sets up kind of a weird dynamic on, you know, because if you know who the valedictorian and the salutatorian are, someone's keeping track. And I am speaking from a nightmare of a situation in North Hampton High, thirty, no, 25 years ago. So I just, and I know there's been some back and forth around, in this district and others. But it's, I think about, I don't know, traditional, or I don't know what the words are, but, you know, an academic learning, or more classic academic versus skill trainings, right? And, and we're looking at skills. So a resume that has the right skills, and we are training our students to pick up those skills and put them forward, because maybe English composition's not their thing, or whatnot. There's gotta be a weight for that. I mean, and I'm, you know, editorializing, so I will button it. But I do, I do have a concern about that. It, it just doesn't feel right. So.
Appreciate your comments, Mayor.
I might just comment, too. I, I was fascinated by the lack of the ranking. Is it like a equity question? Or like, how did that come about?
Great question. You know, I think that, that some people are very, very competitive and look to maybe not take certain classes, or maybe choose based on what they're going to do to think about their ranking. And the pressure. And the pressure, I think it's been a national movement for years to take the pressure off of stu-, not to take that particular pressure, not the pressure off of students, that particular kind of fine tuning of what a student takes or doesn't take based on how it will affect their rank. I think the colleges and universities, we send our students to, you know, the best colleges and universities in the country, and vast majority are not looking for rank anymore because I think of the social and academic pressure that it sometimes puts on students and being aware of that and making choices based on that. They do know their G P A, and I will say that they do. Some will compare GPAs, so they, you know, like we know adolescents are very aware of other things that other adolescents are doing. So many of them are aware, but not all, and the rank is a public, you know, it was a public proclamation, and I think by just going to having the G P A available on their transcripts, it's not as public. And I think we're just following the trend, maybe not following the trend, being part of a wise movement of colleges and universities not to require ranking.
It's like a prioritization of learning over ranking.
Yes.
Like, learning is the central focus of what we do here.
Yes.
As opposed to chasing a number or a status.
And maybe sometimes also looking at, you know, taking a risk or following your passion for something as opposed to what numerically, right, you feel like you need to do. So in a greater sense of an education and skills and concepts and like Mayor was saying, you know, like really broadening the scope of your education. I think there's some thought of that, and I think that makes a lot of sense.
And is creating the rankings of salutatorian and valedictorian based just on G P A? Are there other factors?
No, it's based on G P A.
When did this, you said this is not new, right?
It is not new. At least a few years ago, yeah. It's not like last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but I can, I will absolutely find that out.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Entertain a motion.
There isn't, oh, no, this is the second one.
Yeah, I know, I just made the same mistake. Entertain a motion to approve the East Hampton High School Program of Studies.
I make a motion to approve the East Hampton High School Program of Studies.
Thank you, Sam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Most in passes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Great evening. So we're going to circle back one item under Superintendent Update to the Multi-Tierred System of Support Presentation Hello by Ms. Julianne Levin.
Can I just plug right in?
Two ways. We did not get the plug-in method worked, but you can join the Google Meet.
Okay.
And share your screen, or you can send me the presentation, and I can share it. But if you can join, I'll give you permission to
Okay.
share, and in theory, that works.
In theory, that works, and I'm going to find the link.
We have a backup if that does not.
Just on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
Great.
Julianne is setting that up. We're going to let the public know that our Secretary Megan Harvey and our Superintendent Maureen Benand have been working overtime to make sure all of this technology works a little better.
And the city talk, and thank you for the mayor for setting us up.
We had extra help from Sarah Marie Ashen, and
Still around somewhere, I think.
Yeah, send it to you.
Look at us, seamless.
Yes.
Making it work.
Someone wants to start tap dancing.
Tap dancing.
Okay.
Get that presentation up first.
Oh, wait, I'm not doing that, okay.
Okay, I shall admit you.
Just turn your volume down.
Yes, please mute, and you turn your video off, and then I'm going to make you a co-host. And then you should be able to share. My volume cuts your fingers.
So much pressure, I'm so sorry, Julianne.
Yay!
Don't worry, we're good.
Rock star.
I'm so excited.
I think it's working.
That was a very genuine response from me. I'm very excited by that.
Nicely done, thank you. Those are perfect instructions. All right, all right. I have about three seconds to explain something that is of the utmost importance, so fun for everyone. This is an introduction to something that's called the Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and it is truly how we have been making a lot of decisions in the last few years, and it certainly is something that is shaping our understanding of how we're approaching our budget process, so we felt really compelled to share it with you. So one thing that I want you to all just know really quickly, and I know when we're more into our budget process, Nick will be talking about this data as well. So you've probably heard that we have a decline in our student enrollment. What we don't have is a parallel decline in our special populations, our identified populations. What we have instead is a really dramatic increase in our special populations, and that means both more students are being identified in those populations, and there are, there's a larger proportion of them within our larger school student enrollment. So those, the population I really want to talk about right now is our special education identified population. So between 2020 and 24, our, the percentage increase has been 8.6%. We've had an 8.6% increase in students identified with disabilities in our district. That does not match the increase that's statewide or that's even, we get compared to North Hampton a lot, so I'm sharing with you that that's the comparison I used for this. So in comparison to that 28.8% of our student with disabilities identification, North Hampton has identified 22%, and the state overall has identified 20.5%. There's a really dramatic difference. So something has to change in how we deliver programming in order to address that difference. And one of the things that we've been saying back and forth to each other for a couple of years now is the reason we keep referring students to special education is because we don't have enough what are called Tier Two supports. So because we throw that around a lot, I wanted to give you some definition of what that means. So what is the Multi-Tierred System of Support? It's an approach to providing differentiated and personalized instruction and intervention for all students. So M T S S, I'm now going to refer to it as M T S S instead of Multi-Tierred System of Support, is for all students. It's not just, I'm not just talking about our special education students, I'm not talking about our tier, what we call our Tier Two students, great. All students are involved in the M T S S model. Typically, what you might see is about 80% of your student body, their needs are met with universal support, which is called Tier One. A very flexible 15%, and that 15% flexes in and out depending on what domain you're talking about, will need targeted support, which is what your Tier Two is. And hopefully, not more than 5% need intensive support, which is Tier Three. So that 5%, the vision of M T S S is to have that 5% in Tier Three, it's very different than our 28.8%. So how do we get that 28.8% to a different place? That's what we're all trying to do right now. When we talk about what our programming looks like, I hear a lot of conversations about class size and student-teacher ratios. Tier Two is not counted in those numbers. So when we're talking about our class size, we're not saying we have, you know, 21 students in a classroom, we have a teacher, and then we've got just adults that are coming in and out and giving students support and services in all different ways. That's not counted in your class-size-student-teacher ratio. So I know that that's an important data point, but I really need you to see beyond that right now. Okay. So just a little timeline. If you remember back to 2019, we were in turnaround. One of our schools had been identified in the eighth percentile. It was not a great time for us. One of the things that Desi suggested was that we go to a convening, Multi-Tierred System of Supports convening, and we got to listen to a keynote by Katie Novak, who's written a lot of books that I highly recommend. This one, In Support of Students: A Leader's Guide to Equitable M T S S, is what we read this year as a leadership book study. So our whole leadership team read this and has had conversations about it and are continuing to have conversations about as leaders, how do we support M T S S? This one's also really good, Equity by Design. This is about a specific part of M T S S called U D L. Don't you love all of, yep, mhm. And I'm going to explain U D L in a couple slides. So just if anyone wants to borrow these books, get on board with what we're talking about. We've got multiple copies all around the district. So in 21-22, we really began planning for that M T S S implementation. Obviously, we didn't want to implement anything during COVID, so we were like, let's wait until we get the kids back in the building, and then we'll start doing this. So one of the first things we did was we aligned what are called our student support teams. I'm going to talk about them in a few slides, so I'm going to leave you with that student support team. Remember, we're going to get back to it. When Mountain View opened, we were finally able to achieve a staffing change that we felt was really important. It has been controversial in both this district and other districts. I'm happy to talk about that, probably not today because we're on a timeline. But we really felt like it was important to figure out a way to have an academic special education teacher at every grade level in our K to eight building. That meant we had to reduce our academic paraeducator positions, so we made a transition. We traded out academic paraeducators and hired special education teachers. I don't know how much you know about salaries, but that is not an equal number of people. It's an equal number of money, but it wasn't an equal number of people. So we lost people by making a decision to go to licensed special education teachers instead of academic paraeducators. Then this year, I'm calling this loosely, year one of three in M T S S transition planning. And this year, what we've really focused on is our intervention team structures. So our reading specialists, our math specialists, our social-emotional learning specialists. We also added last year, sorry, a special, I'm sorry, social-emotional learning coordinator and administrator level, and then I talked about the leadership team book study. So some of the other staffing shifts that have been in the name of M T S S, around 2019-2020, we added two full-time positions in the elementary schools for adjustment counselors. We hadn't had adjustment counselors prior to that, so our elementary schools didn't have social workers for years, so we were able to get them back. That was huge. We also added a second adjustment counselor at our high school, again, like incredibly important positions. Then I talked to you about the shift already, and then the transition to S E L intervention, which we hadn't, also hadn't been doing systemically. And then this year, a couple of things that we've done for M T S S is we have re-adopted second step, the second step S E L curriculum at Mountain View. It's school-wide, which means it's pre-K to eight. We also brought back the B C B A role. I'm so sorry for all these acronyms. B C B A is a board-certified behavior analyst, and that's someone who is working, again, across the whole district to make sure that we're using the right strategies, the best practices for intervening when students have behaviors that are unexpected. Instructional coaching is another thing that we've really, like dug our heels in. We have an instructional coach, part-time instructional coach at the high school this year, and we have an instructional coach at Mountain View. They are the ultimate Tier One, Tier Two flexible staff member because they are the ones that are able to go in and consult with a teacher and say, you know, something's not going right with this student or with this group of students, what can I try? And the coach is right there to give them real-time feedback, to maybe do model lessons or a little bit of code teaching to help the teacher meet the students' needs. We also have things like lunch groups at the high school, was something that we were just talking about, something that general education students can be part of, even though they're led by professionals who otherwise would never see those general education students. So all of those points of contact with those adults, again, not adults that are included in our student-teacher ratios, but incredibly important adults to have in the building. Oh, sorry, I should have given you a little content warning. So the way that Katie Novak describes the Multi-Tierred System of Supports, I think is genius. She talks about this all over, and it really comes down to oral hygiene. So your Tier One is that every six months you go to the dentist to get your teeth cleaned. You have a lovely dental hygienist, you have a dentist who comes in at the end and says, yep, everything's great. Everyone does that every six months. That is universal, right? So that is Tier One. Everyone gets that no matter what. Tier Two, you might need braces, right? You're not going to go to your hygienist to get braces, you're not going to just have your regular dentist do it, you have to go to someone else, right? But it doesn't mean you stop going to your dentist, doesn't mean you stop getting your teeth cleaned every six months. So it's on top of your universal support, but it's targeted to your needs. That's Tier Two. Okay, so I have a couple implants, and I've had a root canal, right? I've had to go to like an oral surgeon for this, it's not fun, right? But I didn't stop going to my dentist when I had those things done, and now that they're fixed, I keep going back to my dentist, and my dentist is actually the one who keeps the eye on it, right? Who's like, yep, that implant still looks good, root canal still looks good, right? So the tiers are there for the student needs, but you absolutely always go back to that strong core component of Tier One, universal support. Okay, what does this look like in our schools? So our universal support is that we have really excellent whole-class core differentiated curriculum and instruction in every classroom, right? That's number one. Then we have in Tier Two, maybe some additional targeted instruction. Maybe the teacher has to pull a small group of students who on the previous day's exit tickets, speaking of data, exit tickets, maybe didn't quite meet the objective of the day before, and so we just pull that little small group and we go over that, like, oh, this is what's happening. Maybe one single student needs a little bit more reading instruction. That student's not on an I E P, they don't have a reading disability, they maybe just didn't get all their million words before they turned five, right? So that's a little targeted instruction that's usually taken care of by our Title One Interventionists, so we have reading and math for that, and S E L, sorry. And then Tier Three is really that specially designed instruction. Again, we're going back to our special education department, which is excellent. I will say the other reason I think we have 28.8% special ed rate is because we have an incredible, desirable, strong, robust, amazing special education program. So, yeah, I want in too. The important part is that grade-level content is across all of these tiers. So you're not going to Tier Three to get, if you're in fourth grade, to get first-grade content. You're going to, in Tier Three, in grade four, you're still going to get grade four content, but you're going to get it scaffolded and specially designed to actually meet your needs, right? So there's a point of entry that you can take, no matter who you are or what skills you have. Some examples of this, so for Tier One, is universal design for learning for academics. That's a way of approaching designing instruction and curriculum that meets lots of students' needs, and the way it's, actually, I'm going to talk about it in a second, never mind. Behavioral and social-emotional, again, our second step curriculum is our Tier One. And then I also wanted to just say that our core values and the work that we did in our strategic planning really has lent itself to this Tier One universal support. We're saying every single kid in East Hampton deserves this universal support. We're not putting anyone in a separate classroom and saying they don't get access to their grade-level content, right? It's what's called inclusion. So when we talk about inclusion, what we're saying is, we don't have those rooms where we shove kids away and say, we've forgotten about them, right? We just don't have them. Every student in every program in our district is at some point or another coming into our general education classrooms and getting the opportunity to be there with their grade-level peers, with grade-level content, feeling like this is where I belong, and that is really important to our model. It may take a couple other adults going into the room with that student. That doesn't change your student-teacher ratio. Those adults are for that student. They're still really important adults. Just in case you're wondering, you can't read this at all, but you'll get it later. These are most of our core curriculum programs for Tiers One and Two in pre-K to Eight. So if you wanted to look at all, they're all searchable online. At Tier Two, I talked about the academic Title One Interventionists, our math and reading specialists, our adjustment counselors, and our S E L administrator. That's where we do a lot of our Tier Two targeted support for behavior and S E L, and then instructional coaching, which I've also talked about. And then Tier Three, intensive support. This is our specially designed curriculum. We have our special education teachers, language-based programs for academics, and then behavioral and social-emotional support, our student support programs, which again, are inclusion programs, so students are in the Gen Ed classrooms with the support of a student support teacher or paraeducator. And then we do have some behavior-based programs, but again, those students spend part of their day in the Gen Ed classrooms. No one is stuck in a classroom without seeing their peers. So universal design for learning. So universal design for learning, I've talked about it a couple of times, we refer to it as UDL. It's a framework for understanding how you can use multimodal learning to have an opportunity for every student to express their learning. So we talk about representation, we talk about expression, and we had talked about having lots of different ways a student can do that. So one thing we might talk about is the five paragraph essay. It's kind of gone. It's a little like passe now to talk about the five paragraph essay because students can express that learning in a way that's not writing down a five paragraph essay. And so that's one of the things that UDL does for us, is it gives us ways that we connect the learning to the assessment, instead of saying, the way I'm going to see if you learned this concept is by having you express it using a concept that's completely different from that concept, right? So I'm going to know whether you've learned human biology by having you write an essay. But if you don't have the essay skills, you may know everything there is to know about human biology, and I would never know because your writing is what's getting in the way. So UDL gives us the way to think about that, where we're really connecting our assessment to what the student is learning. Another core focus of MTSS is equitable access. I mean, I don't want to talk too much about it because it's a lot, but it's really about having systems in place in order to make sure that everyone has access. So there's no like, oh, well, I happen to know the director of special ed, so I'm going to like nudge my way in here. Like, no, 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 no. We have systems in place for everything. The system drivers of MTSS, I think, are really interesting. Here are kind of the core questions we ask ourselves around whether or not we can actually do this project. Can we implement MTSS? Well, is there consistent leadership and do those leaders support staff to do this work? That's number one. Are they building a schedule that works for the teachers? Are they building classes, class placement, that works for teachers? So there's some leadership drivers there. Competency drivers. Is there consistent understanding? Do we know what we're talking about when we talk about MTSS? And can teachers use that understanding to implement it in their classrooms? And then probably the one I'm here tonight to talk most with you about, but I know I'm really way over time. Implementation drivers. Do we actually have the resource capacity to pull all of these pieces together? So when we talk about, wow, if I could just get one more person in the budget, it would be an interventionist. And that's, we keep saying that to each other, like, we just, we have to build this tier two team because we don't have another option, but because it's the right thing to do for students. We're almost done, I promise. I didn't want to leave out gifted students because it sounds like I'm only talking about students who are struggling, and I'm not. This really works well for gifted students too, right? One of the things that we have implemented for MTSS is called the WIN block. WIN stands for what I need. What I need is for gifted students too. It's not just for students who are struggling to meet skills. And MTSS reminds us that there are a lot of students who are gifted, for example, in human biology, who can't write a five paragraph essay, and that's okay, right? We have places for all of those students. Assessment, please come to me. I'd love to meet and talk more about all of the data we collect. It sounds like there's some interest in talking about data. The mass dyslexia guidance was what came around that led us to implement Early Bird for our literacy screening. That's Massachusetts law, so we're going to keep doing that. We use Forefront for our foundational math skills screening. We use a program called the DESA for our universal SEL screening. I've heard a lot tonight about academic data, and I am telling you, you're missing the mark if you're not talking about SEL data. And we have SEL data for every student at Mountain View School, and I want to talk more about that. Even though the academic data is really important, we have MCAS. We test these kids enough. Like, sorry, not going on that soapbox. We do have district determine common assessments at every grade level. That's the data that we're usually talking about when we're talking about our data, like for instance, the middle school. Those are criterion reference data points. So we're measuring students against a standard or some criteria. What I heard in other conversations was people talking about norm reference data points. So norm referenced is how is my kid doing compared to other kids at that level, right? Criterion is how is my kid doing on their own path towards this standard? So those are two different things. Personally, I think we have an embarrassment of data. I don't think we need more data, but I'm so willing to have that conversation with anyone who wants to. The school district report cards is another data set that we use that involves our targets that we meet for the state. You're also going to be hearing from me in March about the Student Opportunity Act and all the data involved in setting those goals. And then MCAS and the accountability data, I just wanted you to know, includes both criterion referenced and norm reference data analysis. So there's a lot going on. We're using all of these pieces in this tiered model to know where students are moving flexibly between the tiers, because no kid is ever stuck in a tier, ever, right? These are flexible tiers. So we're using data at all times to move kids in and out, to get their skills, where they need to be, to get their needs met. The student support team is the last thing I'm going to talk about. This is where it all hinges, is can you get the right people in the room to talk about a student who's struggling or a student who needs more, right? And that's really at the core here of what we're trying to build, is can we have groups of really intelligent people come together and say, okay, this is what's happening for this student. Here's the background. Here's the data we've collected. What do we do next? And you've got then maybe five to seven of the smartest people giving you feedback as a teacher about what steps you can take next. So it's a really beautiful model. It's hard to maintain with scheduling, with people, but I'm telling you, it's worth it. That was way too long, but I did get through all the slides. So if you have questions, I would love to talk more about this. It really is my favorite thing to talk about because it involves curriculum and data and instruction and all of the pieces. For me, it's the framework that brings everything, what we're trying to do for students, all together. And I really think as a district, if we adopt this and we say, yep, we are going to look through, at budget through this lens, we're going to look at curriculum instruction through this lens, we're going to look at support through this lens, I think that we could build something really special for every student who comes to us.
Thank you so much, Julie. I'm going to just say, we could talk about this for hours. We are under an inordinate time crunch tonight because we have an executive session we need to move to. So we are going to take this up again with Julianne, but we really, really appreciate. There's a lot more to dig into there.
Thank you so much for listening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We are going to move quickly to Nick Burnier for our business and personnel updates.
Good evening, everyone. My business office report for this month consists of four items. First of all, your FY24 local appropriation report update. At this time, 62.48% of our local appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered. Continuing to monitor this year's budget for areas to watch, as I do every month, and transfers that may be needed. Currently, areas of particular concern are utility bills and out-of-district tuition. Some expenses currently in the general fund will be reclassified to grants. I know you hear me say that every month. We're just waiting until the year gets a little bit closer to an end to see where we're going to end up before we actually do it. And with something like Circuit Breaker, you have to wait for the money to actually be there before you can reclassify it. But in any event, in the next, actually tomorrow, I'm going to start doing a budget forecast to project where we're going to end up at the end of the year. And it's early, obviously, there's a lot of moving balls up in the air between now and June, but I like to do that to kind of see what we're going to be looking at. When I wrote this report, it was for the meeting that was supposed to be last week, but tomorrow's the day, so wish me luck. FY25 budget process, the finance subcommittee met for the first time on February 12th. I won't steal the chair's thunder on that. But we're meeting again this coming Monday, February 26th. Meanwhile, I'm working on the budget book production right now. I'm doing all the stuff that I can do before the finance subcommittee votes to push the whole budget forward to the whole committee, so I'm doing everything I can there in preparation, and working on budget edits as well, based on feedback that the subcommittee has or will give. Being a minimum Chapter 78 increase district, coupled with S R three funds running out and, you know, unknown personnel cost increases due to negotiations, that's definitely adding complexity to this year's budget process that was largely absent from last year's. But you will hear a few of the things that Julianne just spoke to as we go through the process because the implementation of MTSS is definitely intertwined with the budget. So number three, we were recently awarded an IEP improvement implementation assistance grant. It was an entitlement grant that districts throughout the state received to help us implement the new IEPs that are coming down the pipeline. The amount was $18,776, and this will be used to provide professional development for staff in writing and implementing the new IEP forms. Lastly, my personnel report for January of 2024. There were four new hires all at Mountain View. We had a part-time night custodian. We finally filled the school psychologist position, and two paraeducators were hired. We did have one separation. Our special ed coordinator for pre-K to five at Mountain View left us. And we had one transfer. We had a paraeducator transfer to a vacant admin assistant position in the elementary office at Mountain View. Current vacancies, the middle school librarian is still vacant, as is the SLP substitute position. I mean, at this point, we're contracting. It's still posted, but, you know, I doubt that gets filled until the individual comes back next year. Special education coordinator is still technically vacant, but I know there is somebody that I'm pretty sure is going to take the position, so that should disappear next report. There is one paraeducator at Mountain View, a special ed teacher still vacant, and two lunch supervisors. So if you know anyone interested in some lunch supervising, let us know. Any questions?
I'm just, oh, I'm sorry. Just the middle school library, what's, is there, it seems like it's been empty for quite a while. Is there something going on there?
It has. I mean, I have no idea what, it's still posted. It's still, I mean, I'm still actively looking to replace the position. I just, I don't know that they found a qualified candidate yet. Maybe the superintendent can speak to it a little better than I can.
A good cheer. Yeah, we've had several people. Some of it has been salary. You know, usually have to have a masters in media for that position. So we're still looking. We're hopefully going to find one because now, you know, this time you have people, if they're going to move, they start thinking about it for next year. So we're hopeful that we're going to find somebody.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to the policy subcommittee update. Sam?
Yes, we were able to meet. It feels like a thousand years ago, but I think it was only two weeks ago. And we organized the committee going forward, so I'm going to be chairing it. And Ben Hershey is, what is that clerk, right?
Secretary.
Secretary. I get my.
Clerk is fine, yeah, either way.
I get my Roberts rules and my Quaker process mixed up sometimes. And so we, basically, our big priority for this year for us is like going through our policy manual and updating to the current MASC policies. And so we planned out the rest of the school year in terms of our meetings and the next meeting that we have. I have the wrong cell phone with me.
March 1st, I think.
March 1st, I think, is the next meeting that we have.
I think it is.
But, yeah, so we're rolling.
March 1st.
Okay. Yeah, March 1st.
All right. Thank you. Finance subcommittee update?
All thunder. You can have all the thunder because you are, we have this excellent meeting with the finance subcommittee. We've gone through Mountain View School and East Hampton High School in great detail.
Discussing the budget.
Discussing the budget, the proposed budget for next year that we are working on, that Nick is working on. We have meetings coming up next week on the 26th at 4:30 to review the district and the special education budget, proposed budgets for next year, and then on March 5th to review the second draft of the full operating budget, if there's any changes that have come from those first couple of meetings. I do have minutes that are in your packet. There's one typo in the minutes. We'll vote to approve them in just a moment, but I will give you, say the typo then, or should I say the typo now? Don't even need to. Say what?
Say the typo.
Oh, no, these are the older ones that are in the packet. This is where the typo is.
So we have to amend this?
Oh, I have to amend them. I see. Okay. So the one that's in your packet, under public speak, I say that somebody, or the minutes say that somebody came to public speak to remind us of the program in the prior term. That's a presentation in the prior term.
Keyword.
It's, yeah. So we will amend and then vote.
So do we not approve those tonight, Sue? Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, the minutes sum up all the things that we have done, and I thank Nick for all the hard work on it.
Okay, wonderful. We're going to move right back to you. Oh, wait, no, very quickly. We don't have a lot of time to discuss this, but I would be willing to entertain a motion to endorse the application for the gentleman who's very excited about American Eels.
Yes.
That Megan referred to earlier. We do have a lengthy email about that, and we can discuss it at length in a future meeting, but he has to apply by March 1st. So I entertain a motion.
Motion to support the American Eel grant project.
Seconded.
To endorse an application for a grant for the American Eel project, Sue.
Sounds good. I love an Eel.
That was Megan's motion. And Ben, were you the second? Eric was the second. Eric was the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Yay, yes. Okay. Moving on to action items. Go ahead.
I have a motion to approve the school payroll dated 1/25/2024 in the amount of
Second? Thank you, Sam. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Approved?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 1/25/2024 in the amount of $291,248.27.
Second?
Second.
Sam, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Approved?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 2/8/2024 in the amount of $589,287.26.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approved?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 2/8/2024 in the amount of $723,533.04.
Second? Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approved?
We have a motion on the table to approve the out-of-state field trip request for EHS to Virginia/Washington DC for We the People Finals in April of 2024, and there's more information in the packet about that. Is there anything?
I really wanted to talk for 10 minutes. I'm going to do it at the next meeting. These children are phenomenal. Kelly Brown is a saint, as are all the people who help her. They're wonderful. They won the state championships. I was there. I cried. It was incredible. We're going to talk about them at length, and we've encouraged them to come to present in March, but we are very tight on time. So we are looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? This is to be clear so they can go to the national competition because they won states. Okay. Next, go ahead.
All right, so we have minutes in our packet here from January 23rd, and I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2024 regular meeting.
Second?
Second.
Sam, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approved?
We also have minutes prepared for the work session on January 30th, and so I will put forward a motion to approve the minutes of the January 30th, 2024 work session.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approved?
We have a request on the table to declare cheer mats at EHS surplus. We have a request on the table to declare cheer mats at EHS surplus.
Yes.
Is there any additional background you would like to?
There was a letter from the athletic director requesting that we can surplus these so they can donate these old mats to another school. They don't have the space to store these extra mats, and he would rather donate them so another school could benefit. That is the reason for the request from the athletic director. Do we have a second for that motion? Thank you, Sam. Any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Request granted.
All right. We also have a request on the table for a one-year unpaid leave of absence for Scott Kavna for the 2024-2025 school year, with additional information in our packets about that.
Congratulations to Mr. Kavna. A second?
A second.
For the record, in application of the Fulbright Distinguished Awards in Teaching Research Program, and if he is awarded this, he would need the leave of absence in order to go. And we don't know yet if he has been awarded this. This is just the preparation for.
Correct. Any discussion?
Very cool.
So with the asking of the year, one, does, do they stay on payroll?
Unpaid.
It's unpaid. What about benefits?
Great question.
I don't know about benefits. Unpaid leave, you usually have to pay your own benefits.
Yeah. Cobra?
Yes.
And then, so is he asking for the sabbatical to preserve number of years in the system? Like, why not just not work and reapply?
He is asking that his position be saved for him at the school, but he knows it's an unpaid leave.
So the position would not be replaced because it's an unpaid leave? We were agreeing as a committee to put it on hold?
Yes. Somebody would take that position for this year.
Yep.
So we would put an application for a long-term sub?
I know. Yes.
Do we want to find out the answer to the benefits question before?
Once I do want to amend the motion to say pending negotiations of details of benefits or something? Or do you just want to vote?
No, I'm just curious. I was looking for sabbatical policy, and I talked to the HR director for the city, and she was talking that there's no one, it's just departments have, different departments have different policies, and I couldn't find the school departments. I mean, I know it's not a frequent request, but I feel like it's getting more frequent. Because it's a new world. Why wait? I wouldn't.
All right, so the motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, we are going to vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, do we need a motion for the request? Because I think we just had the request. I don't think we had a motion in a second. Do we need a motion for that?
I have you as making the motion.
I do too.
Yeah.
Cool, do we have a second?
We did.
Okay, then never mind. Good on me.
No, but thank you. It's good, this is how, it's great. The last one we have is for the annual.
Okay, so the last motion on the floor tonight is a memorandum that I'm going to put on the floor, is a memorandum of understanding with the Children's Advocacy Center of Hampshire County, the Handle with Care Project. And again, there's information in the packet about that. And so the motion on the floor is to agree to that memorandum of understanding.
Let me get a second? Second? Thank you, Sam. Any discussion? Okay, great. We are going to vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting dates will be February 13, March 12, March 26, which we expect will be our public hearing presenting our FY25 budget, April 9, April 23, May 14, May 28, and June 11. We are going to adjourn, no, we are going to move.
Roll call. Read.
Read it, exactly. Thank you so much. Executive session pursuant to MGLC 3OAS 21A3 to discuss strategy, this is what I'm reading?
Yes.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.